Okay.
Tell you about that.
Nope, it's fine. We'll go ahead and call the Ford County Commission meeting to order. This is meeting number 2020-21. And first up, we'll have a prayer, followed by a Pledge of Allegiance. We have Pastor Bless Your Cooks in here to lead us in order. Prayer.
Father in heaven, we thank you so much for this day and for this great nation we are blessed to live in. Father, we just pray that you would be with our nation. Lord, give us wisdom and discernment. Father, I pray for wisdom and discernment in the meeting ahead. God, I just pray that you would guide it. Lord, we love you and we thank you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the first thing we have, we'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add under legal counsel, the Ford County Sheriff Storage Building contract. So I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I would second Mr. Chairman. You said under the legal counsel, is that correct?
Yes, number two, under legal counsel, Ford County Sheriff Storage Building Contract. So we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have the approval for meeting minutes 2020-17, 2020-18, the additions and abatements, and a credit card statement. And I'll have Patty come on up to explain to us about these RE and PP.
The RE are real estate ones. They were 2019 POPs.
Okay.
The large ones come in, they gave some expensive information.
Uh huh.
The PP's are personal property ones. Could be, I think people traded some things, come in, signed their additions, et cetera. Are those, and the WC is watercraft. We have to code them differently because they're done differently now by statute. So we have to code them WC so we can get them currently on my side of the roll with Debbie.
More different form from the other?
Yeah.
All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda. With the motion seconded, any other discussion on this?
Patty?
Sorry.
All the RE, all the large ones, they're 10,000. How many, how many different pieces were we talking about there?
I think, um, two, there's three of them. Three of them. Four, sorry, four. Four separate parcels.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Up next is approval for claims for payment amount of $237,894.65. I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the claims. Motion seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's probably the most full our meeting's been in a long time, which is nice, getting things back. Now we're at open public comment. Please limit it to five minutes per individual, 15 minutes per topic. Final action may be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation does exist. So if anything, anybody has anything they'd like to talk to the commission about, now's the time. Come on up. Randy and Timbers?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take an opportunity to talk about our memorial service last Monday over at Spearville. A young man by the name of Ethan Hawley that played taps for us during a memorial service there and did a fantastic job. Just brought the class of that service about tenfold. I'd like to say thanks to that young man there for doing that for us. He was nervous as could be, but he did a great job. So anyway, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, there's no unfinished business. We'll move on into legal counsel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Glenn.
All right, Glenn.
We have, first of all, certification to Landmark National Bank. Landmark National Bank is where all the county's active accounts are located. And by resolution, we're to certify to the bank who is authorized to transact business on which accounts. And we've had two very significant retirements in the last few days with Judge Wood as district judge, of course, Deborah Pennington as Ford County Treasurer. And both of them appeared on several of the accounts that are active accounts for the county. So the certification before you simply makes the adjustments that are necessary as a result of those two retirements. So we're asking the board this afternoon to approve the certification and then have it signed and then get it over to Landmark. So that's going to be taken.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the certification to Landmark National Bank.
Okay, the motion seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The second item that you just added to the agenda is agreement with Dana Williamson for the architectural work for the new storage shed, Ford County Sheriff's Office. And I took a look at that this morning. You'll note in there that Dana Williamson has a fee of $6,000 and also provides for additional fees that might be involved with engineering and those types of activities that would be necessary, maybe necessary with the design and ultimate construction of that facility. There was only one concern that I have. We've had this concern before. If you look at paragraphs, I believe they're 11 and 12. And basically, that talks about the instruments that are created by the architect. The architect continues to have ownership of those documents. And Ford County has the right to use those instruments through the construction process. And then it states in there that at the conclusion of the construction or upon termination of the agreement, those documents are no longer accessible to Ford County. And what we've required in the past is that she, the architect, can continue the ownership of the documents, but we should have access to those documents in the case of remodel, repair, you know, anything that might be necessary with regard to that. That has not been a problem in the past. I have not had an opportunity to talk with her, but I don't anticipate it will be a problem with this agreement either. So what we would ask today is if we'd be allowed to maybe, or approve the agreement subject to our people to kind of work out that language with regards to future use of the documents.
Well, it just came about because when we were doing the health campus project, we had an issue with, we also had the Expo Center to, yeah, the architect not allowing us to use the, basically, we paid for it, but we don't get to own it. So we wanted to make sure, what projects moving forward that we, we were, yeah.
But we did make the change on the export. No, sorry. We did not have a problem. We just made the change on the export.
Glenn, how would you, how would you say that needs to be warranted just to approve the?
I'd recommend the board approve the agreement subject to legal counsel and working with the architect to modify the language in paragraphs 11 and 12 concerning future use of the drawings and their security.
I make a motion to reapprove this contract. Can you hear me? Okay.
I don't know if it's clear. We can. I don't know if the TV will be able to hear you.
That's good. Well, go ahead and ask the people ahead.
Oh, it's your motion, sir. Make a motion that we approve this agreement with the Sevick Council. Look over these 11 and 12 and modify if it are need.
I would second. All right. I, with the motion seconded, Glenn, is that concise enough to follow?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The reason I wear this mask is sometimes when I talk to my wife, I don't want her to understand what I said.
I fully understand. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Glenn. Thanks. All right, so we'll move right along into the county administrators' reports.
First item on the administrative report is for Notchus Reed Director David Nichols. These are just the items that we've got to talk about. How you doing, Jamie? Before we get started, does everyone need any more gifts?
I would take, I would take one.
I'd take one. I got a couple bottles here yet.
Love it.
All right, I'm ready to go. What I'm asking for is request to go out for auction on these pieces of equipment here tonight. There's eight items of equipment and have miscellaneous spare parts for grasshopper mower and deck parts, grasshopper deck parts. We have our brand new mowers. They're working great. So we do not need the grasshopper stuff anymore.
What's the new mowers?
Kubotas.
Kubotas, okay.
They're awesome. They're working great.
Yeah. Is there a big difference between product?
Yeah, there is a big difference. The unit itself is really large compared to the grasshopper, of course, four-cylinder diesel engines, nice, never run out of power. Steering wheel that I put in there instead of the hydraulastic handles, real comfortable for the operators.
Okay.
So it's working out great.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Notchus Reed Director David Nichols' request to sell at auction these eight items plus those spare parts.
I second it.
All right, with motion seconded to sell the equipments, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, the next item on the agenda is for Roadhead's Director Chris Sylve.
Good afternoon.
Good, Chris.
Hi, Chris. Late last year, I came before you when we were looking for some five pickup sand. I asked for permission to sell five of our older pickups at auction. We have not sold those yet. We were waiting on all five pickups of new ones to come in before we just put all five of them on auction. During that time, a need has arose within the county for extra pickups. Maintenance has added personnel and they would like to have a couple more pickups to use. So what I'm asking for is permission to transfer pickup number 10 and number 36, which we were originally planning to sell at auction and transfer them for, to maintenance. It's something that you could get them by for a couple of years until they could budget and get their own pickups.
Okay.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the change request for repositioning the pickups to maintenance division.
I second it.
All right, with the motion seconded, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
I have a question.
Oh, we got a question.
Don, are we replacing any vehicles that you have now or?
No, we're just adding.
Just adding these on? Okay, thank you.
All right, that's right. Awesome. Still call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And also I do have, we're waiting on one more pickup still. It was sitting on the assembly line when the assembly plants got shut down in Flint, Michigan. They got opened back up May 18th to come in and start cleaning everything up, getting everything ready to go. And June 15th, they were supposed to be back to full operation. So our pickup should hopefully be one of the first on the off line.
Gentlemen, item number three is for IT Director Marty Grimmer, but he is unable to be here today. Basically, this is going to be a one-year renewal of the Handelmeyer software. It's already budgeted for. This is for all electronic devices we have in the county.
I make a motion to approve the invoice for Trend Micro Software renewal.
I would second.
With the motion seconded, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I would say aye.
Sorry.
Let's square my throat so that comes through better. Aye.
Item number four is for Western State Paint Expo Center Director Danielle Crouch.
Forget it?
No.
Look at his belt.
So before you is an addendum that I would like to have approved to go out to all of the event contracts that we have. It's been reviewed by legal and this came about, you know, I've alarmed several associations for ad facilities and they're all putting something, some guidelines in place so that when we all do return to events, we're doing so safely and letting everybody know what the facility staff is doing and what we're asking of participants and event producers. Also with that, it's just a general warning, but we would like to have approved to just display at the entries of the facility and in different areas throughout the facility. So just to know safety of our guests.
I bet these conversations are really interesting.
Very much so.
Probably all over the board.
Yes.
Like requirements and... Is there a timeframe change in cancellation notification or refunds or any of that inside of this?
No, this just is simply, you know, posting signage, posting some guidelines on what to do should you, you know, know somebody that's sick or, yeah, so that we can assist the health department with tracking, you know, if something does happen. And then also just basically going on record to show, you know, what we are doing and what the events are doing to help protect each other.
Chairman, boys, I don't want to open up a whole brand new can of worms for what you brought up, the cancellations. Although, I know this is not a conversation we're ready to have today, but if that's something the commission wants us to look into, to change that policy since we've had this, then that's something we can look at.
I think it's probably, I mean, coming from my side of it, I think it'd be fine to maybe have a refresher on even our end of what the dates are and what it looks like for somebody like that. Because I think that, I could see where this could be something that kind of goes back and forth with at a host of an event where it could be unsure. But if you guys want to look at that, I'm okay with that. But I think kind of my thought coming forward was on the commission side of it, if, you know, just knowing the details of how that works. I don't necessarily stare at the contracts that much, so I don't, it's not on the top of my head.
Currently, our contracts don't address the health issue or humans or animals. And so I am working to, I have a revision that I'm still finishing to include that, that will then go to legal and we can definitely present that.
Why did you include the World Health Organization?
I'm sorry?
Why did you include the World Health Organization? Do you know who that is?
Yes, because there are some guidelines, I believe, in animal.
Run by China.
What's that?
Run by China. And Trump just kicked him out.
Well, we can remove that.
Just, I looked at it and I thought, how old is this piece of equipment?
Just a few weeks.
I understand about CDC.
We can easily delete that if, if we don't need it in there.
Glenn, what's your thoughts?
I didn't know that, I think the World Health Organization has a lot of good things to offer. I think the, all we're doing is looking at their recommendations.
Recommendations?
Yeah, we're not doing anything in particular.
Danielle, it's obvious to me that you spent a lot of time working on this, on this document. I've got a concern or two. One of them in our mandatory requirements for remamp of producers. Talk about under access, notify Western State Paint Expo Center for a person who is present on the, let's see, I'm rattling here, present on the competition grounds, test positive for COVID-19 within 14 days. And I'm wondering about the competition grounds there is, that seems to be...
Too small.
Well, yeah, it seems to be targeting, targeting a certain kind of event and probably not on purpose, but not all of our events out there are competitions. And I think probably, you know, that, that language on it needs to be modified somehow to, to reflect.
Expo property or?
Well, yeah, expo property, exhibition ground, building or whatever. I'm not sure what, what the change needs to be, but that seems to be.
I think expo property would.
Narrowing down onto a particular event rather than a, rather than a place. The other concern, and, and you know, that's, that's kind of just a clerical concern, I guess, but the other concern is that some of our events that happen out there are really kind of informal. You know, some of the ropings that the guys do out there are more like a community event. They come and pay their deal to come and do that, but it's, and I guess they have somebody that's in charge of it, but it's not really a super sanctioned or organized event in some cases.
Actually, they are.
Yeah, it is, okay.
They're national organizations.
I was more under the impression that we had some folks out there that are paying their fees to come and do kind of a community roping type of thing. And, and I thought maybe this was a rather onerous type of thing to put on an event such as that. If it's, but if it's more of an organized thing there, then I, I can, I can see that. The other thing is, is on the participants. And I, I agree with trying to move the responsibility and the liability off of us, more onto the event coordinators and the, and participants. We have on there under access, participants to require, required to self-monitor their temperature. I don't know if that's something that a whole lot of people have access to in a...
Well, I think it's just a more specific way of saying if you feel sick, you know, the CDC guidelines, you know, if you feel sick or, then, you know, to stay at home and things like that. So, and I know that this was referred to in a lot of other facilities that were not doing their own temperature testing. They were just saying, you know, that it's your responsibility that if you have a fever.
Okay. Those were the comments I had about it.
So what about the part E where it says enforce social distancing requirements throughout the competition grounds all times? I mean, what's your, what's your thought there? Are you changing that wording to be expo grounds?
Yes, wherever it says competition grounds, we'll, I'll just change it to expo property.
Okay.
And many of the other guidelines that we looked at for other facilities, they had used those terms because of some of the activities weren't in the facility or they had 200 hours of things. And so that was just kind of interchangeable. So that's why I use that, but we can easily change it to expo property. And it, in my mind, is all encompassing.
We don't really have a future date of when this would ease on that feeling either, right? I mean, it's just an addendum. We could remove later. And that's kind of the idea. It doesn't want to change the contract.
So my thought is, no, it doesn't change the contract. Every, everything that I have on contract at this time would receive one of these to sign and return.
Would you all think about, would you all want to think about putting a date for us to review this?
I would think so.
Ninety days?
Yeah. Ninety days.
Hundred and twenty?
Just shut the building. That's what you have to do. You're going to end up shutting the building. Me and brother, people come in roping. You've been to a million ropings.
I have. This doesn't prevent any, any event from going on.
Guess I can't read, girl. If you're, if you're bad at temperature, well, you, you're married to a cowboy and you have a cowboy kid. And if he's going roping, his temperature could be past 99. And he's going to go roping because he ain't going to say, Jack, what? He's going to take a time long to go.
Right. So this is going to be put in place.
So what are you going to do to him? You going to arrest him? Or what are you going to do?
No.
Kick him out?
We're putting it, we're asking that if people exhibit signs, just like the CDC recommendations, if you exhibit signs, if you're sick.
Did you see, did you see the deal of the programming that we did here at the council? You know, after the deal about all the things we had, we, we suggested. Wear a mask. We, social distancing and all that deal. This is mandating. Now, in our other deal, we did mandate it and we just suggested. I mean, I'm only one of three that looks like, that looks like.
So for timelines, a lot of the facilities are actually making this into effective to 2021. But we can definitely put a timeline on it to review. You know, would the timeline be for events that happen during that timeframe? But what do you think?
Yeah. I was trying to run this through a conversation I had with a business owner that puts on concerts here in town. And he, he's moving forward with concert events coming up and helping out with prom and those type of things. And it's interesting having those same discussions through like a business concept like that where they're open to the idea of dancing and mingling and DJ and eventually full-blown bands where it plays out 3,500 people there. It's, it's really going to be hard to get the six-foot distancing, that whole thing. But I think that's why it's more of like suggestions at that point. But they are professionally taking temperatures at the gate, you know, and anybody that is high. his number was same as yours, 99.5, turns away, you know, even if they bought tickets for the event, they're, they can't go in because of that. I think that's really a big test. Yeah.
Warning document, by the way, is, I think is great.
Which one?
The second document, the, the one posted on, to post on the entry of the facility. And I think that, I think that does a nice and concise job of putting the responsibility and liability over on all of us, you know.
We're just trying to, to share, you know, in our contracts, event producers do have responsibility for what goes on. You know, we're just asking them to continue to help us, you know, promoting, you know, the safety of all our guests.
I, I don't, I still remain a little uneasy about this other one though.
Is this something you want to table and review and come up with the right wording?
Yeah, I think I would like to see new wording on it and see how that looks to me before I, something I stamp on it, but
Change the competition grounds.
Those, yeah, those, those kind of things. I just feel a little uneasy about that one, sorry. And I appreciate the work you put in on it, but I do
That's an easy fix.
So.
Is there anything else?
So I don't know how to go about making this motion. I guess we could do it in two motions. I'd make a motion to approve the, the warning document for the outside of the bill.
So what would be your other thoughts if you're breaking into part?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Trying to understand what, what he's sprinting to.
So we can table the second
There's two documents.
So hard.
The second one is pretty short.
Yeah.
Pretty, to the point, just, just a sign that would go on the doors, ask
Yeah, real man, I need him.
What I was pointing out was just a point of order, you know, that's all. If he doesn't have a second, the motion will die.
And that's all right, too.
All right, I'll second the warning guidelines. We can open it up for discussion. Is there anything anyone wants to amend on this? All right, now I'll call vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
So, warning passes. Okay. And C-19 event guidelines.
Would you like me to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we table this actually until I can see new language on it.
Okay. I'll second that. And then, I'm sure we'll have that ready for the next meeting. Pretty easy, okay. Any events you foresee coming up, actually, I should call vote, all in favor?
Actually, I'd like to hear a question.
Go ahead.
Well, you, you started to ask it there, but in between now and the next meeting, are there any events that would be coming off that need?
I think so. I think they'll have one coming up to be the June
Well, there's, there was another event, but I haven't been able to reach out to them if they still want to have it. But it takes place after the 15th.
Okay. We would have an opportunity then to get this fixed.
Yeah, I think it was originally scheduled for the 16th or 17th.
Okay. To be perfectly honest, I'm not going to make the guarantee that it's fixed.
No, that's fine, I can easily make the changes.
That's where I'm at.
And that's fine. You know, this is just the industry standard, the facilities are putting in place and so I'm just following suit.
All right, so we have a motion to table. I'll call a vote on that, all in favor?
Aye.
What do you take, the motion to sign on or what do you take?
No, the, the warning sign stays. This is actually the C-19 event guidelines.
That one.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jamie.
Gentleman, item number five is for the 2021 budget special work session dates. This is basically just going to discuss what dates you want to have the work sessions for the budget. In your package, you probably have something in front of you that has our calendar inputs. Don't let that confuse you because I will change whatever, things I need to change in the meantime to, to fit around the budget session.
Jamie?
Yes?
That's just in here, but
Okay, never mind. You don't have my, my calendar in front of you. And instructions we've had, basically, with the pandemic going on, is to keep all of our budgets flat and to kind of slow our capital projects down until the end of the year to see where we're at with tax revenues. But the 2021 budget, we won't, we won't know till the end of this year specifically if it's going to affect us. I think we've been getting a lot of, we've been catching up with our tax revenue, so we should be good. But just in case, we, all the departments have instructed to keep their budgets flat, so there shouldn't be any increases.
What about personnel?
We've, we've stopped hiring unless they absolutely need that. We've just kind of slowed everything down.
Sure.
If we were already in the interview process and we were going to select somebody, we want to head with it. We didn't want to keep somebody, go through the interview process and tell them we're not going to hire. But we've kind of taken, we've kind of slowed the role involved, you know. Unless you have, if you have somebody like attention and they leave, you need to replace that person.
Right.
But if we're able to push it on a little bit, we've been slowing that down.
Can you find me if you, if you hate people?
There's quite a few in this room.
Did you stop, did we stop for the work, work deadline?
No. But if you, we've been usually able to get through these things in one or two days, one and a half days. So, nothing's changed on our part.
Right.
You said that you, I guess, sent out to the staff that we wanted to keep budgets flat. Was that, did that also include raises or was that just a general statement about?
General statement, yeah. The 2% raises we're still thinking about, so. Like I said, I think with, with the revenues that we've been seeing coming in after the being open for three weeks or so, and then we can say some, can speak on this if she has the knowledge on it. But it looks like we're catching up better than we thought we were going to, so.
Well, and a lot of this stuff that we've been spending extra COVID, we are going to be getting reimbursed.
Right, we're going to be reimbursed.
So, honestly, we might not be 100%
We're going to be reimbursed.
But we can get what they have.
Be interesting to see how it all turns out. When you take a, basically take a quarter out of your, of your fiscal year, I'd like, I'd like to think that we can catch back up, but that's, we'll see.
You need dates from us? I'm going to draw on
Yeah, but it's a tap on my phone, all right?
You've got, you've got 40 minutes. Watch where you're going with your 40.
I think last year they were done at 2:30. They started at 8:00 and were done at 2:30.
And that was, how many times? You did it one time?
One day.
One day? And this year we probably need one, a week?
No, sir. I want to go first time. I feel like one day, one day would be pretty quick. It just depends, you know. We set them for 15 minutes each department, but if there's not a lot of questions, they're over in five minutes, 10 minutes.
I think, I think we scheduled for longer than that last year, which is quite, happened, it happened fast. We got through it pretty quick and folks were able to come in.
Well, every year that I've been here, we always call, call them in early.
If that works, I don't mean, probably a couple of days scheduled and if we get there in one, that's great.
Do you want to start out with one and then?
Or we could do it that way?
We've just done it in one day since, you know, maybe it's just the first, the first year when it took over, they have done it in two or three days. But the rest of them have been pretty quick.
Does June 25th, is that too quick for departments to get their numbers in order? We got two of the largest departments shaking their head, no, okay. There's other departments? Nope. Yep. Somebody's pretty busy over there.
Yeah, sure.
Truthfully, I'd like to have July, but
July?
But, no, I can get that.
Does anybody else feel that in, into July? Like would the 8th or 9th be a better date?
I, I can, I can make the work, it's just, when you have the ledgers, it's, they're small things that you like to calculate. Like our electric came up a couple of years ago.
Would June or July?
It'll be okay, it'll be okay. I'll help you.
I'll help you.
Where's HR, we got work on, clean coming?
What time did we start those meetings?
Eight.
Get in. 25th since been okay.
It's kind of nice with COVID, we don't really have a lot of things scheduled for trips, vacations, people in trainings. Kind of long.
Thursday, June 25th, 8:00 AM.
June 25th, 8:00 AM.
Make a motion to approve June 25th, 8:00 AM. Are you going to bring the chief of record, why? It's a date.
I'll go buy it tonight. And save it.
Save it.
But in our level.
Chief of record, get me your eight pound baby. Chief of record, get me, that's my thing. That's okay with me.
So a motion for June 25th at 8:00 AM? Motion second is in further discussion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amy, did you just send that?
Did I what?
Did you just send that meeting budget request?
Did I just send it?
I just got it.
No.
Sean Fletcher's on it. That's Sean Fletcher. I was like, man, I have not even made the motion yet, it's already been heard. All in the county.
It's unofficial, yes, sir.
It's accepted.
All right. All right, gentleman, item number six is the upcoming meetings. We have the National Association of Counties Annual Conference, July 17th to the 20th, and that's in Orlando.
It's been canceled.
I was about to say, is that still happening?
It may have been canceled.
It's been canceled, I think they got, whatever, type of contingency for it, but
Yes, and Friday.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Wouldn't be attending that.
With your chipper cut back. That's funny, you have to have that teeth.
That's right, babe. I don't even know whether the sub-kiddies committee are going to be on that. Like, maybe just
I can't imagine reading that size.
Sean, did they email you?
I thought it was a message. Yeah, I had some, there was some other county news here also about it. Yeah, Nego Moore cancels 2020 annual conference. And I, I did get an email on it here a while back too, but
They, they didn't tell us about refunding our money.
Should, should, should be getting refunded.
I'll be, I'll be following.
Yeah.
So that brings us up to the second one.
Yeah, the KCCA Annual Conference, July 21st to 23rd in Liberal. Well, they moved that because it was supposed to be in March or April of this year and then they moved it, so.
Supposed, it's usually the first few days of May is what happens. And then, of course, with everything going on, they moved it, so. And I had not planned on attending that because it was hard on the heels of when we were supposed to be in Orlando. But, I don't know, I mean, if that's still going, would they, they change that plan or?
That's all I have for the county administration board.
Mr. Chairman? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.